Welcome to the Oshkosh area school district board of education regular meeting for Wednesday, February 24, 2016. Has this meeting been properly noticed, Mrs. Collins?
Yes, it has.
Can you call the roll, please?
Dito.
Here.
Eliason.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
Kertak.
Here.
Here.
Holmstead. We have a call.
At this time, we'd like to be, do our pledge of allegiance from being led by Washington Elementary School students Catherine Stuppi and Alexis Kaufman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looks like at this time, we have our presentation of middle and high school student art awards.
And you're going to deal with the certificates?
I will do the certificates.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone, and we're really pleased to, for the second board meeting in a row, to honor our outstanding art students throughout the district. Last, last board meeting, we honored all of our elementary students, and tonight, we're able to honor our secondary students, and we'll be calling your names individually. I have phonetic spellings of some of your names, but I'm, I'm going to follow the phonics that I remember from a long time ago to do that, but I apologize in advance if I mispronounce a name or two through this process. But also, each of your art pieces of artwork, along with your name, will be on the screen, so you can watch for it as it comes, and then make your way to our board president, Steve Dito, who will be handing you a certificate. So, and we again thank you as a number, the number of students we have, but also the cooperation of parents getting you here and celebrating with you your recognition, and we're really pleased to have outstanding attendance tonight. With that, we'll start. First, students, Emily Jacquettes. Caleb Sarafogel. Caleb, here. Jack Buchell. Madeline Rochelle. Okay, this is my ultimate test. Athena Umbate. Shannon Morris. Elaine Rig. Sierra Folet. Ally Emrick. Samantha Payne. Mariah Creutz. Ashley Gorts. B. Tao. Lydia Gothor. Gabrielle Lattery. Riley Taylor. Andrew Stengel. Connor Zibel. Zoe Holmstead. Elise Bench. Destiny Bastwick Hin. Luke Lothar. Bailey Starko. Emily Hayder. Dominique Power. Anders Larson. Henry Artus. Chloe Crook. Ashley Jones. Emma Gargahagen. Isabel Bass. Jake Brown. Joe Kerrigan. Brianna Mason. Haley Margaret. Tyler Rentmester. Mira Sue Marshall. Jasamine Lor. Kira Kelly. Ella Skiffstedt. Skiana Lee. Ella Stefan. Mariah Dedrick. Elise Liskey. Lauren Ron. Katie Inter. And Courtney Carpenter. We thank you greatly for coming this evening and recognizing both the students who were here to be honored directly, as well as for those students who couldn't make it this evening, we'll be making sure that they get their certificates delivered to them over the next several days. Thank you so much. Right, yes, that's great. No, baby brothers and baby sisters stayed home.
All right, at this time, we have our board and administrative reports. Superintendent's report, may I start with that, Stan?
Sure, as soon as I retrieve it, there we go. Just to hold a minute till it settles down.
Superintendent's good news report for, for the past two weeks, for February 24th. First of all, congratulations to, to Oshkosh North, Oshkosh West High School seniors who were notified of their selection as finalists for the National Merit Scholarship Program Competition, which is based on SAT scores, GPA, rigor of coursework, as well as volunteering and co-curricular participation. Congratulations go out to Oshkosh West trial team on their first place regional competition, and they will compete with the Wisconsin, at the, in the Wisconsin State Supreme Court in the middle of March. In partnership with selected businesses and local organizations, the, which are listed here, Oshkosh West students recently challenged the clean junk out of the trunk. In preparation for a safe winter driving, students cleaned out their cars, car trunks and equipped them with ice scrapers, flashlights, blankets, and other items that would be used in a winter emergency. Perry Tipler and ALP students traveled to Evergreen Retirement Community to begin their Student Ambassadors Program, which will help them to gain career exposure and conduct volunteer activities. Students made ice cream sundaes for the residents and visited with residents and enjoyed their company, thanks to all who make this partnership possible with Evergreen. Congratulations to Oshkosh West Special Education Teacher Stephanie Pollak, who was chosen to receive the 2016 Pre-Service Educator Mentor Award by the UWO College of Education in Human Services. Some of the attributes for, attributes for selection of a recipient are based on the ability to model professional responsibility, effective classroom management, the ability to nurture candidates on a wide range of issues, as well as at least five years' experience demonstrated in a sustained pattern of mentoring pre-service educators. Congratulations. Also go out to West's head basketball, baseball coach, Tony Garretts, who was inducted into the Wisconsin Baseball Association Hall of Fame, and West Assistant Baseball Coach Scott Morrison for being awarded Assistant Coach of the Year. Carl Traeger, elementary families attended Noodles, Noodles and Knowledge Pizza Palooza, the family event sponsored pizza dinner, plus interaction, interactive stations designed to show how much fun learning can be. The event included journal-making, a science experiment, and an obstacle course, a candy-themed photo booth, and math game center. Special thanks to Carl Traeger's PSC for sponsoring this event, and for the fabulous Traeger staff and parents who volunteered to make sure that this event was possible. Congratulations to three Traeger Middle School students who participated with 39 other students from the, from schools in this, with the Scripps Regional Spelling Bee. Second-place winner Jonathan Bowers will advance to the state spelling bee in Madison on March 18th. The winners from the state competition will advance on to the national spelling bee contest that's always held in Washington, DC. Several key, project key counselors led a very informative and successful sectional for other counselors from all over the state during the Wisconsin School Counselors Association 2016 Conference. They shared information on several topics, including PBIS and conscious discipline, the philosophy of the ARC, trauma-informed care, and practices used to improve student achievement and behavioral outcomes. They participated, participants commented, comments were very favorable for their presentation. The focus of PBIS at Webster Elementary for the month of February was ways to show kindness. The students created a heart that included the kind of act, act of saying, then each student is, strung the hearts together to make kindness chain. The chains were then deployed outside of each classroom. Congratulations to the Oshkosh West swimmers pictured here, who qualified for the WIAA's state swimming meet to be held on February 20th. South Park Middle School families participated in STEM Night on February 18th and were then able to make giant bubble pendulum paint with South Park staff and created a grand opening for the South Park Learning Innovation Cooperative, which is a cooperative space in which they promote innovation, learning, community engagement, and workforce development, thanks to all the partners who make this possible at South Park Elementary, which was, the event was so eventful. And Carl Traeger, seventh grade science classes, had a visit from an alumni of the school who is attending the University of Virginia for aerospace engineering with a minor in social entrepreneur, social entrepreneurship. Students learned how his independent research project to create a surgical wound care dressing to prevent infections and accelerated healing was being developed. They also learned about the importance of doing their best in middle school and high school, and how this will affect their future endeavors. Wonderful part of tracking and getting students to think about careers. And lastly, Superintendent's calendar for the last two-week period. With that completes the Superintendent's report, President Dito.
Do we have any reports from committee chairs? Allison?
Facilities and Finance met on February 18th. We were given a presentation by the LEGO League students, and they are called the Quadraticals, and they've come up with a presentation, actually a business idea that they would like to implement in the school district for recycling our mill cartons, and they had a business plan, and they had a slide presentation, and there was a question and answer afterward, and we were very impressed. And so they're asking for permission to move forward on this project, which we said absolutely, but we got to wait till after the referendum. So, they're going to move forward on that in April. We talked about the banking RFP. Kelly Handy's put out an RFP for banking in a summary spreadsheet that was shared with the committee. American Deposit Management Company was hired to review and analyze the results, and the recommendation was that we stay with the bank that we're with now, which is Associated Bank. Vanco online fee payments, now that we're accepting credit cards, and we're thinking about accepting credit card transactions for all of our fees, we are looking at, or, I'm sorry, for all of our, for all of our payments, we are assessed a fee, and so we talked about, do we pass the entire fee on to the user, and if not the whole fee, how much of the fee, and basically, we settled on $1.50 per transaction regardless of, of the payment. Summer projects, Jim Fox gave us an update on summer projects, namely Roosevelt and North. Roosevelt's going to be closed for the summer, and North will be closed in phases to accommodate the amount of work to be performed this summer. The aquatic area will be closed March 25th through the first week in August, so all the rec programs are going to be held at the South Park pool. Jim indicated that there's a study being done on South Park with regard to eliminating that pool and creating a flex space, but he, and he wants to make sure he had final dollar amounts before a final decision was made on South Park, so a lot of moving pieces. It was also noted that the kiln at Roosevelt is going to stay there, however, it's going to be moved to a safer location, so that little hands don't get burned. The last thing that we discussed was the district-wide security cameras. It was basically a presentation that we will be discussing tonight again. Representatives from the EPCOT team gave us an update on district-wide security cameras. There was an understanding of budget implications, however, this proposal has unanimous support across law enforcement, who encourage the district to look at improving some of the security measures. It's our community's expectation that schools have some type of surveillance, so with the district going to referendum in April, and school safety being such a prominent issue right now, the thought was that it could enhance this referendum. Most facilities have no cameras, and there's also old systems in Oakwood and Jefferson. Oaklawn has the most modern setup. It was noted the real-time data is critical. There's a need for maintenance and technology to collaborate. It was noted that the district purchasing poly, policy should be followed no matter where the dollars are coming from, and needs to be communicated. There's minimal operating cost once the cameras are installed, so really, this is a one-time deal. They'll be depreciated over 10 years, and then they'll be part of our facility plan to be replaced, you know, 10, 15 years at a time, so. So that's going to be coming forward tonight, we can discuss in more detail. The next meeting is scheduled for March 17th at 10:00 AM in this building. Thanks.
Other reports? Hearing done, we move to our non-agenda-related public forum. Does anyone have anything they wish to say that, talk about that is not on the agenda this evening? Does anyone have anything they wish to speak about on the agenda-related public forum? Something that would have to do with this evening's agenda. Mr. Owenstein, please come forward, state your name, your address, and limit your comments to five minutes, if you would, please, sir.
Hello, everyone. You know me, I'm Carl Owenstein. I am the Chair of Support Oshkosh Students, and I am leading the Vote Yes campaign for the 2016 referendum, and I wanted to come here today to talk a little bit about that event. But before I do that, let me tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a parent, I have two children in the district. I was, of course, a former board member from 2010 until 2013, and I'm currently really a concerned community member who thinks that it's absolutely essential we continue to build and support the school district here in Oshkosh. And the first thing, I'd like to start by thanking you folks. I know, as a former board member, the hard decision and the ugly numbers that you have in front of you, and I also understand, really, that you're doing this the right way. You need to make it clear that a three-and-a-half million dollar reduction in the budget has unfortunate and, I think, devastating consequences for Oshkosh as a community, for our schools as a place where kids get the best education they can possibly get. So I understand the real hardship that you face, but I also want to remind the people here and the people on television that it doesn't have to happen, right? This, we have the opportunity here in Oshkosh to step forward and do something, I think, great. There has, there can be no cuts, and in fact, as we heard just a minute ago from Ms. Garner, that we can get some security in our schools that is uniformly endorsed by law enforcement. So our schools become safer, and we preserve the really great stuff that goes here on Oshkosh, it goes on here in Oshkosh. So it seems to me that there's really only one conclusion, and that's to vote yes on April 5th. Let me just throw a few facts in about this story. I think where we start is to say that we've watched the Superintendent's report, we've heard about it for months. We know that Oshkosh is a great school district. We do great things. We have students who are achieving at the highest levels. Our students are graduating at high rates, and we do that at an incredibly low cost. Again, the numbers are clear. We, we pay our teachers less than every other comparable district in the area. We spend less on administrative costs than almost every other district in the area. We pay less in taxes than almost every other district in the area right now, and we get terrific results. And unfortunately, we're in a position where we, as a community, have to step forward and keep that terrific and work that we're doing going forward. And, and I think on the other side of this is that for only about $9 per month on the median home cost, which is about $129,000 in Oshkosh, that median homeowner would pay $9 a month to support the great work, to continue the good efforts, to improve our security, it just seems to me that this is an absolute no-brainer. Vote yes is really what Oshkosh needs, and if you want Oshkosh to be great, to be competitive, you want our community to be strong, we can, we, we need a yes vote, and we need you to come out and vote yes on April 5th. So let me just, again, I don't want to stay for too long, but I do want to say that I'd like you all, board members as citizens, and citizens throughout the greater Oshkosh area, to join me and, and help and vote yes, and volunteer. If you want to come out and help us, we have a Support Oshkosh Students campaign, we meet on Monday nights. We have a website, you can find us at supportoshkoshstudents.org. You can find us on Facebook at Support Oshkosh, facebook/supportoshkoshstudents. We're out there, and there's a great group of volunteers that are working really hard to make sure that our kids continue to have a great education, and you can, you can do the, the smallest thing to help us by voting yes on April 5th, but we're always glad for more help, and we look for that support from the community. So, you know, we hate to be in this situation, but Oshkosh has great schools, and a vote yes makes for a greater and a better Oshkosh. So thank you very much for your hard work.
Mr. Owenstein, does anyone else wish to speak on an agenda-related public forum, in the public forum this evening?
Yeah, right here.
Come forward, sir, if you would, please. And if you would state your name and...
Charles Byers, 6316 Black Wolf Point.
Okay.
Town of Black Wolf.
Town of Black Wolf.
I will not vote or support the referendum. I will do everything in my power to influence friends, relatives, acquaintances, and even strangers to do the same. Why? I've got to get along on my income, and you should get along on your income. It's one referendum right after another. Where does it stop? Why is it that we spend more money on education than any other country in the world, and when they're testing against our students, I mean, they run roughshod over our students? Why is that? Now, as I understand it, some foreign schools go to school year-round. Why should we, our buildings stand empty three, three months out of the year? Business and industry can't do that, so why should we do that? Something else here, I don't think that, well, let me say this first. My wife and I got a, we have to get along on, on our, our pension and social security, and we have a small pension. Previously, the previous speaker apparently has got a good income, unlike us, and like, unlike many others here in town. And we don't go on trips, we don't go on vacations, we don't go on cruises, and we damn seldom go out to eat, because we can't afford to do it. We did buy a new car this year, because ours was 17 years old. And you gotta, you gotta have a car, and we're constantly draining down our life savings and, which are depleting at a, at a, well, quite a fast rate. And there's a lot of people even in worse shoes than we are. So, no, I'm sorry, I can't go along with it. It's, it's, I got to get along on my income. You people can get along on yours, and I don't see why you can't. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak during the public forum on an agenda-related issue this evening? Hearing done, we will move forward to the consent.
You do have one more.
Oh, we do?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Please come forward, state your name and address, if you would, please.
My name is Mary Martha Mueller. I live at 220 Northwest Field. I lived in, actually, in the town of Black Wolf. I lived in, actually, in the town of Black Wolf for about 19 years, and then I retired, moved out of state, and have come back to Oshkosh. I have long held the Oshkosh Public Schools in high regard. The, well, you saw this evening, the effect of having a good arts program. Any, I was fortunate enough to hear the, I have to get the North and West Schools straight, the Madrigal Program at Christmas by Oshkosh North. Was very impressed with the quality of that program. I think it was comparable to many college programs. I have a friend who is a resident at Elijah's Place. As most of you know, it is a facility for clients who have Alzheimer's. And this afternoon, I witnessed two young high schools juniors, I think they were, who were giving their time after school, this was not during school hours. And they will come every day and help fix desserts for the residents. You had, that's in addition to what you saw this evening and heard in the report. We hear a lot these days, maybe too much, on the political scene about what we should be doing for our kids and grandkids. I don't know of anything better or more important that we could do for your kids and your grandkids, and for our city, and for our nation, and for the world, for that matter, than to give our children a first-class education. The gentleman who spoke first about the yes program, I think, said $9 a month. Well, you all know how far $9 a month can go. And when you stop and think of the expenditures that we make thoughtlessly, $9 is $9, there's no doubt about that. But I don't know that the majority of people in the city of Oshkosh, when you, it's the best $9 you would ever spend. So I would like to say, as one who has lived here, who has gone for 25 years, who came back, you've got a great school system. If you're concerned about the future, spend that $9. Thank you.
Is anyone else wish to speak on, in the public forum on, item on the agenda this Seeing done, we will move forward to the consent resolution agenda. The consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item, or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and be voted on separately. So far, we have 7A, 8A, and 8B have been requested to be polled. So that would leave... All right, our board will consider approval of 1 minutes of January 7, 2016 special board meeting, 2 minutes of January 27, 2016 regular board meeting, 3 minutes of January 27, 2016 executive session of regular board meeting, 4 minutes of February 10, 2016 regular board meeting, 5 minutes of February 10, 2016 executive session of regular board meeting, number 6, bills payable, and number 9, agricultural courses for science equivalency.
So moved. Sorry. Second.
Call and roll, please.
Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Olmsted?
Aye.
Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye.
Aye.
Eliasen?
Aye.
Eliasen, aye. Olmsted, aye. Resolutions 7A, be it resolved, the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approving
appointments, temporary appointments, resignations, retirements, and salary schedules filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Dr. Herzog, please.
Mr. Dito, I had asked that this one be polled. As I've indicated on, at prior meetings, I always find it bittersweet when we have resolutions that deal with retirements of people who have donated and dedicated years of their lives and money from their pocket, and a great deal of time, energy, and effort to further the education of the children in this community. And so I just wanted to say thank you to those individuals who have provided such service to our district and have chosen to retire. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, please call and roll.
Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Olmsted?
Aye.
Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliasen?
Aye.
Eliasen, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Lowenstein?
Resolutions 8A, be it resolved, the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approving, including security cameras and related expenditures in the 2016-17 budget as part of the authorization to exceed the revenue limits, is filed with the Secretary of the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I wanted this polled just so that we could talk about it, have a discussion about it. We did a written report, but we haven't done a workshop, so I just wanted to get everybody's, I wanted to at least have these guys come and do the quick and the Reader's Digest presentation, have a quick discussion here, and then just make sure everybody's in the know.
For, you all know Dr. Gunlock, but for knowing the leadership that Jay Jones is principal at Tipler, and Tony Byrd as assistant principal at North, they're two of the three triumphant of leading our EPCOT committee, which is our emergency preparedness committee, and they meet monthly, we all meet monthly with police department, sheriff's department, fire department, and our support staff relating to facilities, along with Dr. Jones, to explore and continue our cooperation with police and fire for potential emergencies in our schools. And the issue had surfaced recently to consider trying to, and it's been a discussion item before by police and fire and the sheriff's department, to deal with the security issues that we lack. We have only one school that is at the standard, and that was done as a part of the new construction for Oaklawn Elementary School, and the rest of our schools are very vulnerable, and our concern is to ensure that we have a potential of working with our police department, sheriff's department, and having them be able to track any issues that are of a disturbance, either through the very low likelihood of, we've been very blessed by not having break-in vandalism, but the national security issues are really ones that we attend to and worry most about, and that effort has surfaced through this committee. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gunlock, who will be joined by Tony and Jay, to describe what's being proposed.
Thank you. We have a great relationship with the emergency preparedness entities within our area, police and fire, and Jay and Tony will be able to speak to that in a moment, but one of the things, one of the needs, as Stan indicated, that we have is we do not have a security camera presence in most of our schools, and that is of great concern to a lot of us, and we are certainly an outlier. Most school districts have security cameras in their schools for good reason. We have policies and procedures in place, largely because we have security cameras that are to high schools, but they are very old, and most of them are failing. We, as Stan indicated, Oaklawn, one of our newer schools, is the only one that actually has systems that are up to standard. And one of the recommendations that we have made is that we use some of those resources in year one of the referendum, which is the only year there will be any resources beyond protecting programs. We use those resources to make some security and safety improvements to our schools, specifically in the area of security cameras. We feel that if we go to RFP, we can get a very good price, and we'd be able to equip all of our schools during the 16-17 school year, so hopefully, we would start the 17-18 school year with a modern set of safety enhancements to all of our buildings. So I guess at this point, if you guys want to give them just a little bit of the history or the rationale, you hear it more often than I do, as far as the requests from police and fire for these types of resources, so.
Okay. Great. I've been a member of our EPCOT team for many, many years. That's our emergency management team, and we meet, as Dr. Gunlock said, on a monthly basis with our community partners from the sheriff's department, law enforcement, fire, that sort of thing. And for many, many years, they've really strongly recommended that we look into our camera surveillance at all of our schools. You know, it's really a safety issue, and it's something that I think is really needed. As a former high school dean of students, former high school assistant principal, principal now at a middle school, charter school, and upper elementary school, I see the needs for camera surveillance at all of those different levels. And, you know, we're very careful to implement camera surveillance along the way with, you know, setting parameters through policy on how those cameras can and should be used. I did a little research, and the National Center for Educational Statistics shows that over 75% of all public schools have some sort of camera surveillance in the United States. The higher that you go, as far as elementary, middle, and high school, the greater the percentage of camera surveillance that are in each of those schools. So we've had very strong recommendations from our county sheriff, as well as our new police chief, and you'll see some of those quotes, I think, a little bit later in a presentation tonight, so they're also supporting this initiative.
I think it's also helpful to hear sometimes when you talk with law enforcement, from the term of video surveillance, it's, the majority of things that happen in schools are not the worst-case scenario situation. It's, you probably hear about this frequently, about students being harassed and bullied, and a lot of pure conflict that goes on, and these surveillance cameras can be used more for safety purposes and preventative measures than as far as when there is an incident, trying to sort out the details after the fact. So I think that brings a positive to having proper surveillance in your buildings, because ultimately, it's going to lead to increased safety for situations like that, not trying to sort out the details if an event happened. So I think that just makes for a stronger case for surveillance cameras. The other thing that's important to point out is we have a very strict policy, board policy in the district, on who can access that type of information. It's restricted to administrators, certified administrators, and law enforcement. And there has to be a legitimate need to be able to go in and get that information, so that we have a state-of-the-art policy, you know you just approved those a short time ago, to handle those situations.
And the policy, there are also policies on where those cameras can be located?
Absolutely, absolutely. It would be in common areas, hallways, exterior buildings, you know, that's the other thing around incidents of vandalism, et cetera. People know that we don't have cameras on the exterior of our buildings, and...
They do now.
And it would, yeah, it would be nice if we did now, so.
Good. Thank you, guys.
Any other discussion? Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Call and roll, please.
Herzog?
Yes. Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Olmsted?
Dito? Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliasen?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Olmsted?
Aye.
Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliasen?
Aye.
Eliasen, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Olmsted?
Resolutions 8B, be it resolved, the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approving the list of budget reconciliation items, is filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Is there a desire on the part of the board that we would recycle through them, or was it desire of the board that we respond to individual questions? As a matter of two weeks ago, the board received the complete list of items, and we're very familiar with the devastating impact of those proposed budget cuts, but we would be glad as an administrative team to respond to any clarifying questions that may be necessary at this time.
Was there an intent to just show the words categorized like they did in the presentation last night?
Right, yes.
I don't know if there's...
Right, yeah. Because we certainly could review them for benefit of the devastating effect on the public. There may be some items that wish to be discussed, but I would suggest that since they're all in the same package, that at least we review them all, as opposed to potentially a less-than-completive review of the devastating effects of the budget reductions. So I think Dave and Kim are prepared to pull that up, and we'll be right now, and we'll be able to review the list, and as we have in a number of presentations thus far, we've gone through the detail and the effect of those. As a preface, while they are preparing to present that, the bottom line in both the first year and the second year, but the first-year budget cuts would create for the Oshkosh Area School District and create for us as being an outlier. There will be no other school district in the state of Wisconsin that would have, for example, the limitations of not having electives available in middle school. Those would be gone, and that would create a great limitation on preparation for students into the high school. At the elementary level, the impact would be originally felt and is a compounding effect than going into middle school. But most of all, I am totally fearful of not having a high school that is competitive for our students in the state. Bearing in mind that today, we have two fine, comprehensive high schools that offer the widest variety of course options and depth of courses that would be competitive anywhere in the Fox Valley, including everywhere from Appleton to Fond du Lac. If the reductions were to occur in, as we review them, frankly, our competitiveness for our students would disappear. And what I worry most about is not this year's seniors, but every class after this year would be impacted negatively by having less-than-adequate preparation for career, college, four-year university, two-year university, and the technical colleges as well. The bottom line is that this entire set of cuts that we're faced with would put the Oshkosh Area School District's high schools at a total disadvantage in the greater community. And our students would be harmed, and frankly, would need to be looking at other alternatives for high school education, because it would not be adequate to prepare them for college, university, technical colleges, and the like. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Gunlock.
Okay, thank you. This list is going to look a little different. A lot of people are familiar with this list, because they went to the website, and they've looked at the different referendum information, presentations, and PDFs. That's going to look a little different than this. These are actually the list from top to bottom, and it's the specific line items. On the referendum presentation, we have a couple of things that are different. We've grouped some of these together that seem to be logical to help explain exactly what they are, so that list is a little bit more easier to read than this one. We also have in there a couple of charts and graphs around why, you know, a lot of people really don't understand why this has to happen. And a big part of it, in short, is that state funding has not kept up with inflation whatsoever, and there's a fairly significant funding gap, and districts across the state of Wisconsin are having to go through these types of exercises, and this just happens to be our particular situation. We then put in there the impact and any comments which include any additional information that you may need to know. Okay, so that's where we went with this. The prioritization on the left was actually an averaged ranking of each of the four action teams as they were averaged together, and that's how these came out from top to bottom. If you'll look, some of them have been moved to the bottom, and I'll explain why a few of those were. One of them was the sale of the riff road property, and we'll explain that shortly. So, starting at the top, the first reduction would be requiring all middle school students to take one study hall. This would eliminate or restrict access to middle school electives such as family and consumer education, technology education, science, technology, engineering, and math education. Most of the electives at the middle school would not be offered because students would be taking a study hall in place of those. The next one, we'd reduce employee travel by 10%. That's roughly $25,000. That's already included in the professional development reduction. The next one is eliminating funding for professional development opportunities. That's about $60,000. That reduces teacher and administrator opportunities to continue to stay current. That would go away. The next one was reduce building budgets by 5%. That's about $43,000. That reduces the resources for supplies for schools. Fees could be increased to offset that, but we already have very high fees. The next one is increase the high school music teaching load from four to five sections. That's about $84,000. That would eliminate or severely restrict any individual student attention on a given instrument, and the quality of the music program would be diminished. The next one is increase the amount of teacher subs to 16 periods. This means that instead of their prep period, teachers would sub for any time that there's a sub needed to the tune of 16 periods. That would save us about $60,000. We currently have them do eight, so that would be an increase there. We'd close one of five middle schools. That would save about $350,000. That would result in larger middle schools would require boundary adjustments. We would reduce district administration. That would be about $130,000. Assessment coordination, district points, supervision of curriculum, et cetera, could be compromised. Our ability to respond to the needs that come into the district would be reduced. The next one is eliminate supervisory assistance and assign teachers to supervise. What that does is that means teachers, instead of having opportunities to work with students around their issues, they'd be spending time supervising study hall and things of that nature. The next one is reduce the high school athletic budget by $90,000. There's two major components to this. The first piece is increasing the athletic participation fee from $50 per sport to $100 per sport. And the more significant impact is we would basically co-op north and west high school sports. So we would have one team for boys swimming, boys and girls golf, softball, boys and girls soccer, boys and girls cross-country, as well as football. So there'd be one Oshkosh team as opposed to west and north. The next one is examine health plan reductions. That's the spousal surcharge. That's about $300,000. As you can see, if you go through the referendum information, we are already the lowest in terms of compensation of the 40-some school districts in CISA 6. This would slide us further in, you know, out of line with the rest of those districts. The next one is increase class sizes to 28 to 1. In a sense, the only way to do this is eliminate anything that isn't running at 28 to 1 now. So that typically involves your electives. That involves, would be the business programs, the technology education programs, art, music, German, French, certain charter programs that are quite popular, such as ALPS. If they are not running at that 28, then they would not be able to be run because we would need to recapture about $595,000 there. That's probably one of the more significant ones as far as impact and would make us a true outlier compared to any of the other high schools in the region. We'd transition orchestra to fund 80. That's about $280,000. Orchestra would become an after-school activity, and it would compete with other opportunities during that time. Quality and student participation would decline. That would, in a sense, offer orchestra through the activities, the rec department, as opposed to through the school district. We would cut one secretarial staff at Central, and we would also reduce a maintenance person, and that would be about $120,000 between those two positions. And that would be, in a sense, what would happen in 16, 17 for the start of the next school year. That would allow us to reduce our budget by $3.4 million, which is the requirement. And then we would need to move into, which one? Yeah, we'll get to that one at the bottom. The next section, the next colored section, is what would need to occur in 17, 18 because we would have to reduce by an additional $4 million, given the state revenue limits. So the first thing we would do is combine two elementary schools into the now vacant middle school building. That would save about $250,000. That would involve closing neighborhood schools. We've done that before, and that has decreased enrollment, so that's always an issue. You can sometimes make your issue even worse. You start to accelerate in the wrong direction. District boundaries would not be contiguous with neighborhoods. Feeder school pathways would be disruptive, and we would, of course, have to transport those students, which now many of our students walk. So transportation costs would go up, and then we'd have to modify that middle school now-turned-alimentary school to make it appropriate for shorter children. The next one is students, a very small one, but students who are partially free and reduced would pay 50% of their fees. That would generate about $9,800 across all of our students. The, a big one is the moving to a contracted cleaning service. We would be laying off roughly 21 of our custodial FTE. That would save about $420,000. The impact of that is ownership, personal care, and security of our buildings would be diminished. The average age of the buildings in Oshkosh is 75 years. And if you've been in any of our buildings, I am always amazed at how clean they are and what care our existing team takes of those buildings. I've worked in systems where that was not the case, where we did this, the contracting of the cleaning service, and the quality of the buildings goes down. They just have a lot of personal care, which is really nice. Eliminate department chair stipend. That would be about $71,000. That would eliminate those leadership positions within the departments. Much of the adjustments to the curriculum and the modernization that keeps us moving in a positive direction and makes us, makes us a leader among other districts occurs through the work of those individuals, and that wouldn't, they would just not be there. Eliminate elementary music, art, and fayed specialist by 50%. That means that the classroom teachers at the elementary level would also be teaching art, music, and fayed for half of the year. That would significantly reduce their prep time. We already have an issue with very little prep time for those elementary teachers, so that would be, that would be an issue. That would save about $700,000. We'd eliminate math literacy intervention skills teachers. These are folks, there's about 11 of them, about $880,000. Students would not receive interventions in math and reading. The teachers would be responsible for all those interventions. Now, these are the same teachers who are also doing now the art, music, and fayed, so they have limited prep time. So in a sense, what that means is they're going to be focusing on those children that they need to provide interventions with, and they will have less time to focus on the children that they do not need to provide interventions with. The next one is eliminate all professional development and instructional support not mandated by programs like Title I. About $1.4 million. That would impact about 25 of our teachers would be, would no longer be here. District professional development and instructional supports would be eliminated. Any support to classroom teachers would be eliminated. They'd be responsible for all the interventions as we talked. They'd also be responsible for scheduling, logistics, and administering the AP tests at the high school, which is incredibly time-intensive right now. They would be doing that themselves. Teachers would have to be responsible for any PD opportunities that they were interested in. Our curriculum scope and sequence would be largely compromised because there would be nobody to work with teachers on that. The Learning Without Limits initiative would be unsupported. We're showing tremendous benefits from that right now, and that would be unsupported. The innovation labs and media centers would have limited hours because there wouldn't be staff there to man them. Gifted and talented opportunities would be limited, and math recovery would be drastically reduced. The last one in the seven, oh, yes.
So if that, if that happens, then the entire technology part of the referendum that we voted for two years ago would get wiped out, yeah? We would stop giving laptop or computers and iPads to kids at that point.
That would be a decision we would have to make at that time, but there would be, it would be, you'd be, if you're going to keep providing them, you'll be dropping them off on the doorstep, and that's about it.
Okay.
You know, so, yeah, we would have to really look at that because there'd be no point necessarily in doing that. The last one for 17, 18 is there would be no wage increase and no step movement. That would save about $1 million across our employees. That's a one-time solution. We'd lose competitiveness. We are already the lowest, and that would push us even farther to be the lowest. Other districts are not doing that. In fact, they're moving in the opposite direction, so that would put us as an outlier. We believe costs would increase due to turnover. We've experienced that before. And the people that you hire back in, you don't have the option of hiring them for the same price of the people who left. The people who left most likely will be making less than those that you hire back in, so that becomes a very difficult one to operationalize. So that is the 16, 17, and the 17, 18. Just to let you know, on the list, farther down on the list, we have cut high school administration. That's about $110,000. We already are staffed lean compared to high schools and other school districts. We'd reduce middle school deans by 50%. That'd be about 2.5 FTE. Existing deans would need to cover multiple schools. Once again, we'd be an outlier in that regard. We would provide no dental insurance to employees. That would be about $1 million. That would make us less competitive. Remember, when we look at that compensation number, we wrap in salary and we wrap in the total cost of benefits. So all, both of those numbers are wrapped together, and those together also put us at the, at the bottom. We would double the employee deductible. That would save about $500,000. The next one that was on the previous list from the last, in 2014, was allow only, high school students to only take six credits. They couldn't take seven or more. That would save about $500,000. That would really place students who are on a college track at a disadvantage. They'd not be able to take the courses they need to compete with students in other school districts. That would be probably our biggest challenge of all of these reductions. It's going to be really tough for our students because they will not have the same experiences that kids in other schools will. Eliminate all elementary counselors was in there at 655,000. That's about eight FTE. Given the issues our counselors are working with, which you are very aware of, that would be very difficult. Classroom guidance lessons would be eliminated. It'd reduce support for behavior issues and social, emotional, mental health needs. Eliminate, and the last one on there is a double because it actually out-and-out eliminates elementary music, art, and fayed. Remember, we previously had that on there. To cut it by half, this would eliminate the other half. So then it would be gone, and basically, teachers would be responsible for 100% of that. So that's in the blue shaded region. We are not recommending those in year one or year two. In the red shaded region are things that really are not considered, you know, they're not future options, and here's why. Selling riff road, it's one-time revenue, and we're already pursuing that. Okay, we're already moving down that road, but it's one time, so you can't really use it for your ongoing operational budget. You have to use it for one-time things, like if you needed to, let's say, replace a track, something that was a much longer expenditure, and we would have every intention of doing that. Okay, so that, that means that $700,000 would still be used, and it would not be competing for those other dollars, but we got to target it for the right expense. The next one was outsource additional 4K sites. When we analyze that, that's actually going to cost more money, so we took that off the list. And the last one was suspend the strategic compensation point system. We took that out because that's already part of, we've already eliminated all that in a previous reduction. So those three really came off to the end for those specific reasons. So that is the entire list from start to finish, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be, did I miss anything? You got it all? Okay.
I noted before we began this list, the impact on students. The impact on property owners in the, in the school district is one that needs to be clearly noted and understood. As a result of these cuts, both first year and second year, the values of property within the school district will definitely drop because the attractiveness of our school district, which we currently have, will diminish. And if one looks at the average, or let's just use the $100,000 home, the reality is that that is a $581 increase over seven years. I am certain, based on all the statistics I've read on school choice and, and property values, that the diminished value of a $100,000 home, or let's say, a $200,000 home, will be greater than either $581 over that period of time, or $1,162 if it's a $200,000 home. Every property owner in the community will lose value in their home because the schools no longer are an attraction for purchase. That is proven all across the country. The match relating to property values and schools in the number-one issue in property selection and home purchase selection is what are the schools like? And there is no way that you could not, not lose the amount that would more than offset any additional payment of $83 per year for seven years on that property.
Any other discussion? Dr. Herzog?
The Wisconsin Association of School Boards continues to remind us that the number-one job of school boards and boards of education is student learning. And as I look through this list, there are many things that would directly impact student We are in an era where, and we've seen this over the last several years, where staff members have left this district, not necessarily because they were looking to leave, but because another district reached out to them, and in most cases, they are getting more money. They have to look out for their families. We're in an era of teacher shortage in various subject areas across this state, high school English, high school science, high school math, and other areas beyond that. If we lose the quality of staff we have in those areas, it diminishes the quality of education for all of our students. I've said more than once, and I know you all believe this, that all of us are impacted by how well our students do in schools. They're impacted, their families are impacted, the employers in this community who hire our high school students while they're in school, the colleges and universities, the young people who choose to come back here, the kinds of jobs we can attract in this community are all impacted by the quality of education that we can provide. Again, as I look at this list, part of our vision statement reads, "Our district will be a place where collaboration improves student learning to develop students to their full potential through a broad array of opportunities." We don't know what elective area or what content area is going to, I would say, trip a student's trigger, that is, really motivate them to pursue something as a vocation or an avocation. And with nearly 10,000 students in the district, I'm not wise enough to anticipate what's going to help one student be successful in life. So I am not a proponent of reducing opportunities for children. Two years ago, I had an opportunity to talk to some of our high school music teachers because we had, at that time, a proposal to increase the music teaching load, and they all told me that would be a disaster. If any of you followed what our high school music teachers did, based on the work that the middle school and elementary music teachers did in prior years, in the months of November and December, whether it was madrigals or it was preparing for the musicals, or now they're preparing for solo, state solo and ensemble contests, and then there will be an array of spring activities that get going. It's just mind-boggling. Finally, we had an elementary principal here some years ago who had a rubric for looking at changes in education, and it, it went something like this. Would this change be good enough for my children? Would I be okay, for example, with reducing the number of electives for middle schoolers or requiring my middle schooler to take an additional study hall? Or would it, would it be good enough for my child if they had to take orchestra outside the school day, and yet they want to participate in wave robotics and they want to be on the football team? And if the answer to that question was no for her children, her second question was, then why would it be good for other people's children? And that has really resonated with me over the years. And so I know we have to vote on this tonight, and I know it has tremendous impact on students. I've been thinking about this a good deal, and I believe that I've been thinking about this a good deal, and I believe that Mrs. Schnorr had pointed out that on a hundred thousand dollar home, the cost of this referendum would be about eighty-four dollars a year. Is that correct?
Eighty-three, eighty-three.
That comes down to a quarter a day. Now, there's not much you can buy for a quarter a day. As a senior citizen, I know you can't buy senior coffee in one of the fast food places. Today, I was at the senior center for a, a community book study, and I noted that to buy a can of soda at the senior center costs you seventy-five cents. So this quarter, while it has inherent value, doesn't really buy you much. However, if we take this quarter and the quarters of everybody in the community, we can buy everything on this list to protect student learning in this district. I think that's a, a good thing for us to, to support. It's all about the kids. And we heard from a previous presenter tonight that investing in our children and our grandchildren makes a lot of sense, so, thank you.
Other discussion?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions to get things straight in my head. Riff Road, previous board bought that property because their research said that was gonna be a growing area that would need a school at some point? Is that the reason?
I don't have the history on that, but that would be my guess, because the district ran several referendums to actually build an elementary school out there. And it's my understanding that they failed, the referendums failed. And so the board agreed to sell it when we passed the referendum to build Oaklawn, at the Oaklawn site. It just never actually pursued it aggressively. It's my understanding.
Yeah. So just some time in the future, we're not gonna be on the hook to try to find some more property out in that area?
I would think.
Yeah. May I speak to that? Having been, my biggest worry is to ever have a determination that we should have a fifteenth elementary school. The economic overhead to that is, is devastating. And I, I would recommend that if, if there was, that we would not look at an additional elementary school, fourteen, unless we had a growth of a thousand or so students, that we potentially, we would want to tackle the issue of building on to and expanding existing schools. The two hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred thousand dollar extra that it would cost to operate a fifteenth elementary school without serving children first, just the overhead, is, is one that for the long-term future of the district is, is not a good investment. And I believe that, and I think recently, Dr. Gunlock shared the issue of our, going through with our transition with technology, that we will be able to retrieve ten to twelve elementary classrooms because of closing, closing computer labs. And in a conversation this afternoon with Dr. Herzog, she reflected right away in saying eleven, well, that's a two-section school. That's, that's really a recovery there for, which is a very good way of looking at it, that it's, it's like being able to recover without any additional cost, the equivalent of a lakeside elementary school. And, and have that as an additional capacity issue. So, so I, I feel confident that regardless of the issue, that selling that property is, is a wise investment long-term for the district because we simply, we, we have a collection of very small elementary schools that are great as neighborhood schools. But would we do it that way if we started from scratch? No, we wouldn't do it that way because it creates greater overhead costs. We have specialists traveling between schools. We have a lot of lost efficiency than if we had, and I'm not advocating for six hundred student schools, but a good three hundred and fifty to four hundred size school is, is a good operation and we could be efficient.
Contracted cleaning services. I never understand how that actually saves money. Aren't we letting go our highly skilled, trained employees to bring in somebody that's willing to do it for less money and less training?
Exactly. And that's, that's probably why you, you see them diminishing returns because the, you're bringing in people who aren't your employees, so there's some security issues. And then I think the quality of the work goes down because of, they, they pay minimum wage and you get what you pay for.
I also think that, that our employees have a lot of pride in their buildings. You know, they, they take a lot of ownership in the buildings and that pride, that comes through with our ability to be as clean as they are.
I've been down in a lot of these buildings, these old buildings, down in the basements. I've kind of been down there and root around down here once in a while. And I was down there when we were doing a contract bid for, to replace the boilers at South Park. There's corners in that building that haven't seen light for, I would suggest, years. And you go in there with a flashlight and it's clean. I can't say that about my own home. I know that. And I was really impressed with the way that everything in that building, stuff that you don't see, stuff that you don't travel, was just maintained really, quite frankly, immaculately. And we, we do have some good people.
One of the issues we face with that is, is in addition, is the tremendous amount of turnover. Minimum wage jobs generate a turnover to the next best opportunity that comes along. And we do use, both in the summer and during the year, we do have some partial contract. We don't, we don't have a hundred percent of our own employees, but they work under the supervision of our, our employees, and that makes the difference in making that work. And so we are using some, from a contractor, employees, but they are under the supervision of our employees in the district, and that does work.
One of the things you also would lose in a situation like that is the history that many of our custodial crew members have with various pieces of equipment. We've talked about this before, where some of the, some of the boilers or whatever are so old, the companies are either out of existence or you can't buy the parts. And our people create them and they nurse these pieces of equipment along so that they are really doing excellent work as stewards of the, the dollars in the district. So that's something you lose when you have a cleaning crew coming in and out. When I was an acting principal, or principal in one of our buildings, as it started out as a substitute principal, we did have a contracted cleaning service. And they never knew from day to day if they were gonna be back tomorrow or if somebody else was coming in. So the continuity of service was also an issue.
Sure. And then lastly, you kinda touched on it earlier when you said there were some things you had to remove from the list because there were illegal things. For people that are wondering, is there, is there an easier way to explain why we just can't take our entire budget and just cut it by four percent to make, make it a good beat up?
Well, I think because our budget's broken down into a lot of different components. There's not just four percent or four million dollars sitting in a pot somewhere. I mean, eighty percent of our budget's people. Yeah, and even, even if you cut all the supplies and materials, you don't even get to that kind of dollar amount. So there's just not four million dollars sitting in a pot somewhere. It's all basically people. And to get that kind of a dollar amount, you have to cut programs and cut people.
And, and if you analyze the actual reductions that were done, actually, it kind of goes along the lines of that. The, the one thing that struck me the most as this committee looked through it is there's very few places in here that haven't been hit or touched by a budget reduction, almost across the board. So while it isn't just a, hey, we're gonna cut the budget by X amount, eighty percent, eighty percent of our budget is human beings, so that's why this is heavy on reduction of human beings.
And it just kind of roughly added it up, and it seems like it'd be about forty people the first year and another sixty-nine the second year.
Yes, it's pretty close.
And, and part of what I've always, and I've had lots of discussion, and I'm, based on my hair, I'm the most experienced in budget cutting there is in this room. And I can tell you that at varying times over the last thirty-five years, I've been approached by people wanting to look at just across-the-board cut. While we didn't add things in the, into the budget and add improvement in program by across-the-board additions, some places didn't need to have additions, some te, places needed to be altered, some individual programs needed to be adjusted, but we didn't add things incrementally. We should not subtract things incrementally. It's a mindless way of doing it. It's simple, it's fast, it's quick, but it is not thoughtful. And that, to me, is the, an incredible fallacy of using that system.
Can we also remind everybody how much we've actually cut in the last five years?
Yes, we've cut over seventeen million dollars in the last eight years.
Thank you.
So not only, there were a couple of things that factored in here. And a lot of people don't understand until you come to something like this, how you got here. You know, the one thing I remind community members of is pre nineteen ninety-two, you as a school board had the option of setting the levy where it needed to be. The state legislature took that power away from you. They put handcuffs on you and said they will decide how much you will, will be able to go up. The only alternative you have to go beyond that is through referendum. The problem with that is they froze everybody at where they were at that point in time. And at that point in time, Oshkosh was an exceptionally frugal school district, which was not a bad thing, because the school board had the autonomy to be able to say, if we needed to replace a boiler because one has gone beyond its life, we could go ahead and do that. Well, they froze that all out. And it's simple math. If you freeze somebody at a low number and somebody else at a high number, and you give them both the same percent increases, and then multiply that by twenty years, they're just gonna walk away from each other. And that's why we're here and some other districts are not here. Mind you, more and more districts, I believe there's over fifty-five of them that are gonna be going to referendum in April when we are. So this is not an Oshkosh-only problem. This is an issue inside of the state of Wisconsin.
And, and last year, well over a hundred went for referendums to, in the last two cycles of both April and November, or, or April elections last year.
I think it also is compounded by the fact that previous boards under-levied. Between two thousand and three and two thousand and ten, this board under-levied by eight million dollars. So your levy could have been eight million higher than it is right now, and we probably wouldn't be in this situation.
And, and remember what under-leveing does. It just drops the ceiling on you and sets a lower number for the next subsequent year. So it, it, it puts you in this situation. I was in a different district at the time that was occurring, yet I've lived in Oshkosh for over twenty-five years. And I remember looking in on that and saying, that's really gonna put them in a tough spot around twenty fifteen. And I never realized I'd be sitting here in twenty fifteen, being in a tough spot with you, but it, you, you, you could predict, you could run the numbers and predict this out, and, and you knew you'd be here by doing that.
Sure. Other discussion?
Just a comment. It's, you know, as much as we've seen this list and gone through it, the, what term to put to it, I don't know. It's sort of wrenching, right? It's hard not to come to the reactionary language maybe of death spiral, right? It's a death spiral, first for the district, secondarily for the community. And, you know, not in the insurance industry, but you hear that term and you see, you can just project out the impact, and it's, it's just wrenching. So rhetorical, I guess, but.
I guess I've been on the school board the longest, I think since two thousand and eight. And since then, it's been a struggle, I think, every year I've been on the board. We have, we have really tried. I mean, we have closed schools, we have frozen salaries, we have cut and cut and cut, and we have, you have even gone to extremes of, of changing our phone system to save money. I mean, we've done everything, you know, we could possibly think of. But we're in a straitjacket, like you said. And, and thank goodness, the good people of Oshkosh have supported us. I think they, they understand the problem, and, and, and a lot of the credit goes to you guys for getting out there and explaining the problem. And I'm hoping that they, understanding the, the situation we're in, the problem we're in, and, and what we have done in the past to try and solve the budget problems through cuts, that they will support us this time again when we, when we ask for this. It's our only tool.
And I can't help but think of Dr. Herzog's comments of, of that former principal. Would we want our children to be in this position? And I can answer that emphatically, no.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I would like to say that no school district should have to find itself in a situation where we need to go to referendum. And if we were adequately funded by the state of Wisconsin, we would not be here. Recently, in the state of Kansas, the Kansas Supreme Court decided and came down with a ruling which told their legislature that you have to June thirtieth of twenty sixteen to correctly fund your schools, or you are in violation of the state's constitution. We are heading in that direction in this state right now currently. In the last four years, Wisconsin has cut more in public K through twelve education than all the rest of the states except for four. Kansas is one of them. We continue to do this, this is what's gonna happen. Fifty-five this year, last year, forty-three, had a successful referendum in April. Last Tuesday, we had thirteen school districts go to referendum, ten of which passed. Last Tuesday also saw our state assembly feel fit to essentially put in an amendment on something called Senate Bill six fifteen, which dealt with the way that vouchers are funded. And the amendment is going to cost, when it goes back to the senate, if it's approved, is gonna cost the state's schools, K through twelve programs, an additional fourteen point two million dollars, of which five hundred thousand dollars of that will come from this district. This is what Senator Luther Olson came up with. I believe he used us as a, as an example of why not to do this. Oshkosh is not alone in this. This is happening to every, every public school system district around this state and apparently around this country. If there's no further discussion, shall we call a roll, please?
Hymberger?
Aye.
Hymberger, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Nito?
Aye.
Eliason?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Gerner, aye.
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Herzog, aye. Herzog, aye. Herzog, aye. Herzog, aye. Herzog, aye. Herzog, aye. Herzog, aye. Herzog, aye. Herzog, aye. Herzog, aye. Herzog, aye. Herzog, aye. individually, consider resolutions, already did that, request for future agenda items. I'd like to request adequate funding from the state if that would be possible.
And all I could add is, we would love to just get back to running a wonderful school district on a daily basis that we're like in focus on education of children instead of dealing with these issues.
Announcements? Anyone have any announcements?
Adjourn to executive session to be in order. German at this time for the, considering the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility in nineteen point eight five one C of Wisconsin statutes A, preliminary notice of non-renewal for temporary contracts.
So moved.
Second.
Call a roll, please.
Olmstead? Nito?
Aye.
Nito, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Gerner?
Aye.
Senator, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Herzog, aye. Herzog, aye. Herzog, aye. Herzog, aye. Herzog, aye. We are adjourned to executive session.